Call to order, the city council regular meeting on Monday, October 21st. Roll call, please.
Councilman Barxdale?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Present.
Mayor Garrett?
Present.
Councilmember Hammond?
Present.
And Councilmember Jennings?
Here.
Thank you. I invite everybody in the audience and council to say the ad of allegiance. Just to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I can make the motion to add on any agenda to add under presentations, an update from Rashida Tlaib's office as presentation item number C, and then also to add an agenda action item for holiday lighting as item A. Actually, let's put it at the end so that we don't have to update anything else. So item, what is that?
I.
I.
Second.
It's been moved in seconds. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim?
Yes.
Councilmember Barxdale?
Yes.
You're all set? Thank you. And now we'll have a presentation from Southfield School Board Student Representative.
So we have--
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, if you will introduce. Councilmember Jennings will introduce first. Sorry.
All right. So we have Eric Spragons. He is the school board rep for Southfield A&amp;T. Our university high school board rep was not able to attend this evening, but we are going to keep her in her prayers. She's, she had a car trouble. So Eric, I have just a few things about him. Great student. So he is currently a senior. He is the student council parliamentarian, Oakland County Democrat Party Young Dem, Class of 2025 President, Detroit NAACP Youth Council President, State NAACP Treasurer, and he is also in the C-Square Pipeline. So we want to welcome him as well as we want to welcome our school board president, Ashanti Bland. She is incredible and comparable. So we want to welcome them so they can give us an update really quickly and just thank you guys for being here to participate and partner. You guys can come up to those two mics.
You can go first.
Hello. My name is Eric Spragons, student representative for Southfield High School for the Arts and Technology, and I would like to report that the state of school is strong. We had a successful homecoming week and tremendous success. Our pep rally had everyone engaged and energized, and we're grateful to our MCs who helped out with this event. It was a historic moment having university high school and the tenants having a joint pep rally for this event. We thank everyone who helped in for participation of that. I'd like to give a huge thank you to our security team for their diligent efforts in ensuring a safe environment during homecoming week, and also congratulations to Officer King for winning the Employee of the Month Award. We hosted a blood drive in October, and it was successful, and we will be back in November with another blood drive. Additionally, on October 31st, members of the student council will participate in a trunk or treat event at Stevenson Elementary, engaging with our younger students and fostering community spirit. Our student council members also attended a leadership training event with councils from across the state, making sure that we have better, that we can better serve our school and connections to better serve our school community. A special congratulation is in order to Leila Scott for receiving onsite admission to Central State University during the HBCU College Fair Way to Go. I also would like to say that next week, we will be hosting a mock election so that all students are aware to be engaged in this upcoming election. Also, this Wednesday, we will be resuring 17 to 18-year-olds who will be eligible to vote before this November election, reserved to vote, to ensure that young people are participating and have a voice in this election. Additionally, our football team had a tremendous game in these past couple of days, but so far, they have not been able to really come through as they have been asked to do. And so, we still are with them, and we know that they embody a warrior spirit, and their energy and commitment have been inspiring. Our girls golf, freshman Kendall Evans representing university, have made waves on the green, finishing 10th place in the OAA girls' final. Kendall's outstanding performance demonstrates the true spirit of our warrior athletes under We Are One Athletes. Soccer, Emmanuel Spikener and Chio representing university have been a dynamic duo to the field, causing challenge for oppositions. Their teamwork exemplifies the strength of our soccer program, and just like in soccer program, and just like in every sport, we're united under one, We Are One Athletes. Thank you, and that concludes my report.
Thank you so much.
So I am going to stand in for Michaela Beckford. She is 17, and she has car trouble. So I think we've all had that old car from our parents that is hanging on by a thread. And so she was not able to make it, but I do want to make this community aware of a couple of things. The first of which is our district has gone through ALIS training again. And for those of you who are not aware, ALIS training is what many of our school districts go through in case of an active shooter incident. We're teaming up with both Lather Village PD and Southfield PD to ensure that our school district is safe because we all know when you have one of those situations, it directly affects the community. Our emergency plan will directly affect Lather Village considering where university's campus is. And so we have leaned on some of those businesses to be safe harbors where our parents can connect with their students if we ever have that situation. So I do want to let everyone in this community know that Lather Village will be directly impacted if, God forbid, that ever happens in our community. The second thing that I thought I would lift is that we had a visit from Rashida Tlaib. She came to Busy Center, which is our Head Start Program, located off of Nine Mile and Beach. We spoke to her about better district relationships, and I was happy to report that we were going to be coming here. And so, you know, really thank you, guys. This is long in the making. This came out of really good partnerships. Thank you to Mayor Pro Tim Cantor, and Mayor Garrett, and Jalen for being our student liaison and our board liaison because, really, this is three years in the making coming out of COVID. And so we would like to continue it. We're actually working with Southfield to see if we can get another joint meeting just to talk about the bond. So I did want to give you guys a little bit of an update on what we're doing with the bond. As you all know, McIntyre is phasing out currently, which means that right now it's second through fifth grade. Next year, third through fifth, next year, fourth, and our fifth grade class will be the last. We're going to start looking at and testing soil, things of that nature, talking to the community about what do you want to see in this community center. We are proposing, before we go to the community, that we bring together a joint meeting with Lather Village and Southfield to discuss what that looks like for our future. We all know that we don't have a pool at the city of Southfield right now, so we're really trying to talk about what does that look like for both of our communities? How do we merge and bridge a gap, seeing as though we've had to use Oak Park, Birmingham, YMCA, things like that? So I just wanted to let you know that we will be sending that email out within the next month. We were waiting for the election to get over because the election. Other than that, polling places, our district did send something out, as many of you know. You aren't affected, but Stevenson used to be a polling center for Southfield residents, and we've moved that because Stevenson is offline. Please look forward to in June, we will be sending an invitation for a ribbon cutting because that is our second school that will actually be modified. The last thing I wanted to mention to all of you is that our schools will now have a very high sense of security in them. I know everyone has seen the news. We are amending our code of conduct. We are actually putting a parent handbook in place so that parents are held more responsible for their actions on our campus. And so if you guys will look out for that, we can't wait for this joint meeting, and we will keep you updated with what's more to come. Hopefully, next month, Michaela will be able to come and tell you all about university, but we really appreciate this opportunity. If you all have any questions, I'd be welcome to take them.
I don't have any questions, but I do want to say thank you so much for working with Councilman Jennings and getting this back up and running. And you're absolutely right. This was in the making for quite a, well, at least three years.
Yes, at least.
And so it really is, I think this is a great way that we can bridge the gap between Lather Village and the Southfield Public Schools, then start working together. And so anything that we can do to assist with some of the programs that you all said that you have going on, please let any one of us know, or specifically let Councilman Jennings know, and I'm sure he will let all the rest of us know. But I thank you so much, and I appreciate you coming.
No, thank you so much for having us, and have a great night and an even better meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And now we will adjourn the regular city council meeting to go to the ZBA. Oh, I'm looking. Look, I'm trying to keep it rolling. No. Take that back. Scratch that. We're going to the proclamation, sorry, for Family Court Awareness Month. Oh, I didn't have it. I'm sorry. Yes. Yeah, that'd be great if you read it.
It's a long one. So Family Court Awareness Month, November 2024. Whereas the mission of Family Court Awareness Month is to raise awareness about the importance of a family court system that prioritizes child safety and acts in the best interest of children. FCAM also aims to improve recognition among court professionals, legislators, and the public that family court decisions have profound and lasting impact on the lives of children and families, making it essential that these decisions are informed by the latest research and best practices in child safety. Whereas, an estimated 58,000 children in the U.S. are ordered into unsupervised contact with abusive parents each year, resulting in hundreds of child murders during visitation with dangerous parent. In Michigan, 39 children have been killed by parents since 2008 during divorce or custody disputes. Whereas, in August 2024, six-year-old Rowan Maury of Caldonia, Michigan, was not returned to his mother after his father's parenting time. A search led to police discover that Rowan has been shot and killed by his father, who then took his own life. Rowan's mother had previously reported that father's abusive behavior to both Family Court and Child Protective Services. Whereas, in August 2022, 16-month-old Chaos D'Amilo McCarthy was murdered by his father in Genesee County. A Genesee County judge had awarded the father temporary custody just weeks before the boy's death, despite the father's prior felony conviction. Whereas, in September 2021, three-year-old Dylan Thebow was fatally shot by his father in a murder-suicide during court-ordered visitation in Kent County. Dylan's mother had made repeated efforts to report her ex-husband's abuse and threats to six different entities. Whereas, in 2015, the teen Massey children's abuse claims were dismissed by Oakland County Family Court, and the children were sent to Juvenile Hall for resisting violation, visitation with their father. Controversial therapy was ordered, which mandates reconciliation with alleged abusers. This therapy, which is not evidence-based, has been shown to be detrimental, and despite findings of judicial misconduct in the case, the therapy is still frequently ordered by family courts. Whereas Kent County, Michigan, following six domestic violence-related homicides within three months in 2021, recognized the needs for specialized domestic violence court. This court, staffed by individuals knowledgeable about the intricacies of domestic violence, aims to support victims and families, hold offenders accountable, and prevent further homicides. Whereas, the mission of Family Court Awareness Month is to promote judicial education and awareness about the necessity of using scientifically validated evidence-based treatment programs that are proven to be safe and effective. This education should include training on domestic violence, child abuse, childhood trauma, coercive control, and post-separation abuse for judges and all professionals involved in family court cases. Whereas, FCAM is dedicated to educating judges and family court professionals on the importance of incorporating evidence-based, peer-reviewed research into their decision-making. Whereas, Family Court Awareness Month aims to encourage collaboration among legislators, advocates, professionals, and the community to improve family court practices, ensuring they are guided by evidence-based research and prioritize the safety and best interests of children. Now therefore, I, the mayor, hereby declare the month of November to be Family Court Awareness Month.
Thank you. Sorry. Thank you. Next, we have-- Ms. Tipton from Congresswoman Rashida Tlaib's office to give some updates. You can come here. You can go whichever one you want to be here. You're welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Madam Mayor, Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak and to our constituents of the 12th Congressional District. We're happy to be here. Unfortunately, Congresswoman couldn't be here today, but she sends you her greetings. Just to update on things that have been done with the federal funding in 2024, Lather Village received $959,752 for water main replacement project to improve water flow and reliability throughout the city. The Congresswoman also received another proposal, which would come under 2025, a request for community project funding in the amount of $3,500,000. This funding would be used for the replacement and rehabilitation of the Southfield Road water main, which will repair 7,400 linear feet of aged and deteriorated eight-foot and 12-foot cast iron mains originally installed between 1927 and '28. That's a proposal at this time. It's been submitted, but of course, it won't be approved, if it's approved, until 2025. But the $959,752 has already been approved. Are there any questions? I passed out the brochures with the successes in the district for this past year. Council, if you need a copy, I'll gladly bring that over. Anyone in the audience, I'll gladly give you that. All the information is in here of all the victories last year. And also, if you don't know, the Oakland County office will be open on Tuesdays and Thursdays. It's at 26080 Berg Road. We're there from 9:00 until 3:00. It says 9:00 to 5:00, but it's 9:03, and that'll be located on the front. So don't hesitate to come, call. We are here working for you. It's not an elected official in office. I'm not just an employee. That's why I'm here at this meeting. Any questions?
Thank you.
I appreciate your time. I'll give you--
Please, that's, thank you so much.
All right. I'll make a motion to adjourn council and reopen, reconvene as the, or convene as the zoning board of appeals.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Barxdale?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes. Thank you. You're going to introduce?
Yep. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. My name is Eric Peach. This is Webster, the city's planning consultant. The item up for discussion is a sign, an existing sign at 27651 Southfield Road, which is located at a existing retail commercial facility across the street here, which is currently undergoing renovations. That received approval and building permits in September of 2023. So the reason this is before you is because there's an existing monument sign on the property, and per the ordinance, that type of sign, ground-mounted monument sign, is not permissible in the Village Center District. And so what's currently there is proposed to be modified and reused, but because it's an existing nonconformity, the different elements of the proposal that are listed on the review letter require ZBA approval, variance approval. So to go over a bit of the existing conditions on this page three of the report, there are five different observations that identify the current sign as an existing nonconformity. And the first one is that the sign encroaches into the required 10-foot setback along Southfield Road by approximately nine feet. So it's the one-foot setback that they'll be asking for a variance from for the addition to the sign. The second is that the sign has a 48-square-foot surface display area, which exceeds the maximum 40 square feet of surface display of the area that's allowed for signs, for the monument sign. Number three, the sign has a height of five feet, five inches, which exceeds the maximum five-foot height allowed by five inches. And number four, the sign has a maximum total area of 144 square feet, which exceeds the maximum total area of 120 square feet allowed by the ordinance by approximately 24 square feet. And then the fifth of the existing condition summary of the existing sign is that it has a metal base height of 17 inches, which exceeds the maximum 12-inch masonry base of sign by the ordinance by approximately five inches. So those are the existing nonconforming elements of the sign. And if you turn back to the front of the review letter, there are six different variance requests that the applicant is asking for to modify the existing nonconforming signs. The first one is a request for a dimensional variance to allow an additional sign on top of the existing monument sign at a setback of one foot from the east property line, in lieu of the ordinance required 10-foot setback. So if you refer to the diagram further within the letter, essentially, the applicant is asking or proposing to add an additional sign on top of the existing monument sign. And so in order to comply with the setback requirements, that additional sign would have to be set back 10 feet, and so it would offset what's existing in order to comply with the ordinance 10-foot setback requirement. So they're proposing a one-foot setback in order to align with the existing sign structure. The second is a request for an additional, or for a dimensional variance to allow 53 square feet of signage surface display for each side of the sign, in lieu of the ordinance allowed 40 square feet per side. Number three is a request for a dimensional variance to allow a seven-feet-one-inch maximum height of the sign structure, in lieu of the maximum ordinance allowed five feet, zero inches. So again, the height of the existing sign already exceeds the five feet allowance per ordinance, so by adding the additional sign on top, the sign will result in a height of seven feet, one inch. Number four, request for a dimensional variance to allow for a total maximum sign area of 159 square feet, in lieu of the maximum ordinance allowed 120 square feet. Number five, request for a dimensional variance to allow an additional three-inch sign base on top of the existing monument sign. And then the sixth and final variance request is for a dimensional variance to allow no street number to be placed on either side of the existing monument sign, which is a requirement within the monument sign requirements of the ordinance. But again, monument signs are not permissible in the Village Center District, which is where this is. So by any modifications to the sign, the nonconforming, the nonconforming sign section of the ordinance 52-29 states that any modifications would require variances to what they're proposing. So there's a table within the letter that outlines, hopefully clarifies, some of the dimensional components that we went through with the review. And also, the applicant is here to discuss the project. Like I said, it's an existing facility. There's a restaurant that is coming in, and in order to properly advertise is the purpose for adding to the top of the sign. So happy to answer any questions, but of course, the applicant's here as well to discuss the project.
Council?
Yeah, I mean, I think--
Motion first, only?
Oh, yes.
Any motion? So I'll make a motion to approve the commercial sign variance request for 27651 Southfield Road.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Nice. Go ahead.
Okay. So to get approved by ZBA for a variance, you have to show some--
Hardship.
Hardship. Thank you for the word. I was looking for hardship. So what's the hardship that would be incurred by not passing this variance?
Hi, everyone. My name is Jack Machini. I'm the founder and owner of Middle Eats. We're building obviously right across the street from you guys, and we're hoping to get your sign-off on some better visibility for our project. That's my intro.
Rob Crockmo with the Sernell Company. Thank you, Mayor and city council members for allowing us to present this. Right now, if you're familiar with the center across the street, there have been six occupants there for quite some time, the Panera that was there, and having the new one a few doors down with that unit. When we met with Jack, he wanted to bring his unbelievable restaurant concept to Lather Village. Very, very excited to welcome them in the community. It entailed us needing to split the Panera unit, so now creating seven occupant units over there instead of six. The way that the current monument sign is really only allows for six occupants to be displayed there, and when you're going 45 miles an hour down south of the road, you don't really want super tiny signs when you're trying to look for Middle Eats, which we're excited to welcome. So when we sat down and said, what can we do to really match the character of this upgraded center that we are hopefully doing a ribbon cutting for pretty soon as we're wrapping up construction across the street? And when we looked at the existing sign, it doesn't really match the character of what we did at the center, and we decided to do a nice upgrade to the sign with this beautiful dimensional channel sign, being the anchor in the center and making sure we're bringing a lot more visitors to the area to go to, you know, the new Jaybirds, Middle Eats, and Panera, and all the great things that we have going on here. We felt it was really important to have this upgraded appearance, especially as you're driving down Southfield Road or up Southfield Road. So that's why we put together this nice upgraded look, and we hope, you know, you, any questions they have, happy to answer them. We're really excited to hopefully do this and really match the character of the center and continue upgrading things in Lather Village. Thank you.
So back to my question. Like, first of all, I'm excited. I mentioned to you in the hallway, I'm excited that Middle Eats is coming here, and the work on the plaza is beautiful. Like, it's, it's an amazing project. That being said, zoning ordinances, zoning ordinances, and they're in place for a reason, and the planning commission and the council have passed them in order to provide some consistency around how developments happen in various districts throughout the city. So in order to vary from the zoning ordinances, the applicant needs to prove a hardship, along with a couple of other things that are part of the variance request process. So I just wanted to start with the hardship.
Yeah. I think part of the hardship is really that we wouldn't be able to have the proper signage to make it safe for the travelers up and down Southfield Road to see all of the occupants that are in the center there. In order to do something that's, that is safe when you're traveling the corridor, whether it's somebody visiting the restaurant or other businesses that are there, or that delivery driver that's trying to find it, really making it safe, removing that hardship by having, you know, a visible sign that all the occupants can be on, is how to overcome that hardship.
Yeah, this one's really difficult for me because I'm really excited that you guys are coming and welcome you with open arms, but in terms of the hardship, I mean, what the law says is that the hardship has to be due to the uniqueness of the property. And to me, this doesn't seem like it's, it's, has anything to do with the uniqueness of the property, especially considering that the existing sign has, you know, already has, you know, five nonconformities issues associated with it. And then the other issue that I have is our ordinance specifically says in 5229-F3 that a nonconforming sign shall not have its face changed unless it's brought into conformity. So those are a couple of issues I have. The third issue I have is, I think adding a topper to that is going to make that sign an even more of a safety issue than it already is. I mean, I walk my dogs down there six, seven, eight times a week, and I've, in the last several years, I've almost been hit twice because drivers come out of the, out of the lot and they can't see the sidewalk. And to add, you know, I'm only 5'8". It's 5'5" right now. You're going to add another, what's, was it six, eight inches? You're going to add another, what's it, was it six, eight inches? So it's going to make it really difficult for, for people to see it. In fact, we actually requested that the chief move the stop sign, which was at the road, this was about a couple, a couple of years ago, back before the sidewalk because of that issue. And I think this is just going to exacerbate it. So it, it doesn't seem to meet the, the criteria that we have to follow in order to approve the variance. And I also think it's going to make that area a little bit less safer for pedestrians in what's our Village Center, which is supposed to be a walkable district. So I have some issues with that.
I agree with you. I also, you know, seeing it as a hardship is hard because you now have, you know, you have the sign in the front and you have the sign on the side. So pretty visible to me, like, if I'm going to Middle Eats, you know, you have the opportunity, or you have like the luxury of having two signs. So it's just hard to see that as a hardship because most people don't, aren't granted, like, have the opportunity to have two signs on their building. It looks amazing. It's just hard to see the hardship. I mean, and I think, like, having the topper is, doesn't to me necessarily make that sign look any better. I mean, it almost looks like, and I'm not trying to make you guys spend more money, but it almost looks like you should just try to come, you know, conform with what the ordinance is actually asking and figure out a way to incorporate all seven businesses. So I don't know. That's, that's an option. I just don't see the hardship.
Yeah, I guess from a business perspective, I know why you want to have the sign there. But the, the good news for you is I was walking the dogs down there today and I looked up and I'm like, you can't miss the sign on the building. I mean, it's, it's big and it catches your attention. So I mean, that's, I guess a positive in a bad situation.
Did you guys consider any alternatives other than this one when thinking about-
Tried to reconfigure the six to seven because they're spread out six spaces. Someone's going to lose out on availability, visibility, signage space. Who gets to lose out is kind of the hard decision here, you know? So we figured adding something that looks good, it's going to make it look better to match, you know, what the team did to the plaza. It's an elegant, upscale version of it. It's costing a lot of money to add that addition on top. It's not a cheap fix. It's really the only fix we could see as the anchor in the plaza to make it, you know, match the aesthetics of the remodel that we did.
Did you consider moving the sign or putting it, or building a sign somewhere on the property that was consistent with the city ordinances?
In order to stay within the property lines, there, there was nowhere else to put the sign.
Because, I mean, it wasn't brought up during the site plan review when you guys brought up the renovation. Like, it says very clearly in the site plan review, monument sign as is.
Existing, yes.
Existing monument sign as is.
It's not my plot.
I know, I'm asking Rob and Sam.
In response to that, it was six units initially. We split the Panera. Now it would be seven units. So I think when they did their initial remodel, the plan wasn't split initially. I had to convince them to do it.
Yeah, I mean, I know this isn't a great suggestion, but it could be something if it doesn't conflict with our zoning. I mean, could you, could you put it on the, on the base? I mean, it's not great, but it's better than nothing.
I think the-
Because the base is like this big, you could probably get something there.
What are you talking about, under the-
Yeah, so you've got the six signs and then you've got the base. The base is, is this tall and it's wide. I mean, if that doesn't conflict with our, our zoning, Eric, I mean, that would at least be something you could do to at least make it a little bit more visible.
And ironically, if you're the, the anchor, then that means you're the foundation.
Right. And you'd have the most, and you'd have the most space.
Sounds great, but, you know, technically, the anchor is supposed to be prominent on the top. Obviously, that's the goal here, too, have the most visibility possible, you know, because we're looking obviously to stay here for a very long time and serve the community. And we put a lot of time, effort, and dollars into this project. And we want to make it, you know, poppin', make the city look better, the areas.
Eric, does that conflict in the zoning at all?
Only because of the existing nonconformities for area. So that would be number two. And number four, I believe. So because the surface area is already exceeded. But they would be allowed to maintain the sign as is or the structure as is. But I think those would be two criteria that would need to be addressed.
So we'd have to issue a variance for that.
Yeah.
Because it's the surface of the display area. So even if you're putting something on the bottom, you're growing the display area.
Well, I think the, the bottom would also be incorporated into the display area.
Yeah.
Right.
Right, which is already out of compliance. So you would just have to address that component.
Exacerbating the noncompliance.
Right.
And I get what you're saying with this, the 48-square-foot existing. Is there maybe a way for them to use a, a special sticker so it's almost like a flat surface so they're still in compliance, almost? I mean, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to figure out.
What the ordinance would allow without any variances is if you look at the, the existing sign or just the reorientation of everything within the existing display area, you could divide it up amongst what you have available to you as an existing nonconformity. But anything more than that, adding a sign to the bottom, that would worsen the nonconformity, so to speak.
No.
You said monument signs are not allowed in the-
Village Center District, that's correct.
Want to ask a question? Is it okay if I, just ask a question? We, I think it was talked about earlier tonight. When we got the site plan approved, you know, our hopes were that we were going to backfill, you know, a 5,000-square-foot space, fourth, I think it's a little over 4,000 feet. When Rob and I were introduced to Jack's group, we were blown away with bringing up an anchor like that to the center. And so now, we're basically, our, our intention wasn't to try and, you know, do this, ha-ha, gotcha, you know, we need more monument sign. Our, we, we were kind of in the midst of finishing the Panera when we got the site plan approval. And it's really hard to lease 4,000-square-foot space when we found this user with an amazing track record who I think is going to absolutely kill it on the community. It now opened up that, you know, we're just, we're basically losing out a slot. And I don't know if that is a hardship or not, but that's the reality of what happened. It's now one of the tenants are going to, you know, kind of get kicked off of the ability to advertise, you know, their business in the community. And I guess, you know.
Well, they're, they're advertising their-
Right.
So they have this one, another additional sign, seeing that they were just like, let councilman.
Well, for the monument sign, yeah.
I don't think anybody thinks you did a bait and switch at all. The business changed.
Yeah, so it's the hardship to answer, you know, Commissioner Hammond's question is, you know, we just, we didn't know that we were going to have to chop up the Panera space and need another tenant.
Gotcha.
But a business decision on your part doesn't generate a hardship that the city needs to do something about necessarily. Consider it. We are considering it. We're having a conversation about it now, but.
Well, my main concern is at the height, the height of it. And I agree with Councilman Cantor that, just looking at the picture of it, having the additional signage on the top was concerning because it's what almost, it looks like it's the same height as the stop sign. And then agreeing that coming from the backside of it, it just seems like it's going to cause some issues regarding someone in a car and, well, some pedestrian and someone driving a car. And I'm concerned about the next corner and blocking, you know, the right, the sight of the next corner of someone turning out. You know what I'm saying?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm wondering if, if, if it's when you're kind of walking down the sidewalk and being able to kind of see a car leaving or coming, if we kind of scooted the sign back a little bit on the top so that it was, it wasn't any taller as you get closer to Southfield Road?
It's still going to-
So the way that I'm, what I'm saying is when you're looking at this, I'm looking at the next street, if you see it, that someone, you're turning off the street and you're trying to turn left. They have to come out further-
To see past.
To see past that sign.
So if we don't fill the entire top of the sign, if we were to take a little bit off each end?
I still think it would be, I mean, personally, I still think it would be an issue. They still have to pull out too far. This street, if they came, that, it seems like it's blocking. So someone coming off of this street and trying to turn, they have to come out much further because it's just, that's seven feet.
You're, so you're saying it's also because of the height, not just the width?
Yeah, but the-
If we were to like shrink the sign down on top like this, so that it's basically like, instead of going-
You have to keep the sign down like this.
The height, not the, I mean, we're still talking about the width, but we're really concerned about the height. I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. No, I'm talking about the height.
No, I said, yeah.
It'll have to be like this, right down.
Shrink down height-wise.
Any males have any of-
I, I know we can't move it, but it'd be very helpful if we could just move it.
Yeah, it would be, but it's not, he doesn't have, they don't have that much grass, grassy area.
Looks like there's a light right behind it.
Yes, a light right behind it.
We should move it, move it. I mean, it'd be nice if we could just push it, but.
I think you could do it. I think you could pull it up.
What, City Administrator Mike, would we be setting a precedent with like other monument signs if we went forward with this?
Absolutely.
Yes, if you had the justification that they meet the criteria, the recommendation from staff would be just tell Planning Commission to redo the sign ordinance for this district.
I mean, it's not unprecedented that appeals have come up before the council that have led to the Planning Commission considering changes to the zoning ordinances. So if there's-
That's the process, yeah.
If there's enough demand for that type of specific variance, then maybe the ordinances are out of date. But in this case, I agree with what's been said so far personally, that it feels more like a safety issue than anything else.
What about, what about at least, because it's already nonconforming. And we're arguing a hardship is, you know, there's another tenant that needs a spot. So what if we were to be able to use the bottom of the monument sign instead of, then you're eliminating the safety issue.
Yeah, so that's what, that's what Councilman Jennings was asking about and Eric was saying the-
Yeah, still non-
The viewable area. The nonconformity is just exacerbating the nonconformance.
It's still, you know, the safety issue is still-
But that could be-
No, safety, the issue I was talking about for safety would be alleviated if you went to the bottom.
Yes, absolutely.
Right, I mean, it'd definitely be more amenable. I mean, it's still technically probably doesn't meet the criteria for a variance, but in, in terms of compromise, I don't think it provides, provides any additional safety issue. I, I mean, I could probably go for that.
Same.
All right, so might I amend your motion?
Yes, I would like to amend my motion to approve the commercial sign variance request for 27651 Southfield Road, stipulating that the additional signage would be located on the base of the bottom of the existing noncon, uh, uh, nonconforming monument sign.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any further discussion?
Is that, would you be okay with that?
Sorry, one more time.
Would you be okay with your sign at the bottom?
Yeah, yeah, we were just looking at some examples of it.
It doesn't have to be your sign. Somebody else's sign could be at the bottom. You could be at the top. You're going to be organized.
Draw straws. Go over there.
Yeah. But at least it, hopefully gets you the viewable area that you're looking for.
Right.
Without exacerbating the safety.
So just to clarify, if I may, it looks like there were, so there are six variance requests that were up before the board. So basically, it looks like we would be, and Eric, please correct me if, confirm would be number four, where the dimensional variance to allow for total maximum area of 159 in lieu of the 120 square feet?
And probably number two.
And to be added only at the bottom? Is that correct then, or?
To be added only at the bottom.
Because they are, we are expanding the dimensional.
Correct.
Correct?
Yes.
To-
Right, right.
So does that, would that include what they're, I mean, I guess we don't have to have a specific foot amount in the motion, but just to make it very clear, what is being granted here?
Well, what they're proposing on the diagram is an additional sign area of 144 inches by 11 inches. So whatever that comes out to and-
Yeah, so I don't know if that would match with whatever's at the bottom, but I guess just to alter the, to make our motion to specifically-
Yeah, so the, the motion would include approval for variance request number one, not, sorry, number two, which is a request for-
144 by 12 inches?
Request for a dimensional variance to allow 53-square-foot signage surface display for each side of the sign in lieu of the ordinance allowed 40 square feet per side. So that would be included.
One other-
And four, right?
And four, right.
Request for a dimensional variance to allow for a total maximum sign area of 159 square feet.
Well, we don't know what that square footage is actually going to be in this case.
12.
Oh, right.
17 by 144.
Was it 144 inches by 12 inches?
17 by 144.
Oh, by 17.
The city administrator said not to exceed and also said not to exceed.
Not to exceed. What was the number? 120?
17. So, so it'd be, yeah. So if you guys keep it going based off of what Eric's report has and you just place not to exceed, it'd be granting a variance for number two, request the dimensional variance to allow up to 53 square feet of signage surface display in lieu of the allowed 40 per side. Request for a dimensional, divisional, dimensional variance to allow for a total maximum sign area up to 159 square feet in lieu of the 120 feet maximum. And then number six, request for a variance allowed no street number to be placed on either side of the sign.
Okay, so moved.
Wait, but wouldn't it be, for number two, wouldn't it be? No, he's a 53, so 53. I'm tracking.
And just maybe including the motion with the intention that the additional signage will be located on the base as depicted in the, in the packet information provided by the city planner.
I'm not really worried about that because, I mean, we're telling them that you can have this additional space. How you break it up is up to you.
But just to, just to determine the additional space is only however much space that base is.
Ah, so I'll amend the motion to state that the additional space can be no more than the additional space provided by the existing base of the monument sign.
You have to repeat it for her.
Yeah, there's a lot. Okay, so I'm making a motion to approve the commercial sign variance request for 27651 Southfield Road, but explicitly only including the following approval requests. The first one is a request for a dimensional variance to allow up to 53 square feet of signage surface display for each side of the sign in lieu of the ordinance allowed 40 square feet per side. To approve the request for a dimensional variance to allow for a total, for up to a maximum sign area of 159 square feet in lieu of the maximum ordinance allowed 120 square feet. And to approve the request for a dimensional variance to allow no street number to be placed on either side of the existing monument sign. And that the signage will be placed only on the existing base, the additional signage will be only on the existing base of the existing monument sign.
Second.
It's already been second. Okay. No, it's already been second. We already have.
No roll call here?
Not yet. So, any other debate? Here in, none, roll call now.
Okay. Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Barksdale?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cantor?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Thank you. Speakers are limited to three minutes and please give your name and your street. Anyone wants to be heard about anything on the agenda?
So is this a school part right now?
Pardon me?
Are we doing a school now?
No.
Yeah, okay. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, everyone. Councilmember in there. Uh, the reason for me being here is, um, I came to a meeting last week, uh, with the tree committee. And, um, at the end of my street, Coral Gables, it's a dead end. And I, um, requested help to get rid of all the bushes there because, um, it's just gathering so much trash. And it's hard for me to keep the, keep up with the maintenance on it. Uh, I recently lost my husband. And so it's hard for me to keep paying that amount of money every month, every time I get my grass cut. Um, I have pictures of the, the place. I know that they pulled up my address and were able to look at the dead end. But both my neighbor and I, um, we have to keep up the maintenance on it and it's just becoming, um, it's just attracting a lot of animals, um, because people just leave trash there. It's, it's like an easy way to get from the dead end to the AT&T and just drop the trash there.
Um. Do you want to give your information to the city manager, to Mike?
Mm-hmm.
And he can perhaps help you with that. Thank you. Is there anyone that wants to be? Yes, I'm sorry. Um, is there anyone else that would like to be heard regarding any items that's on the agenda? Any items that's on the agenda?
Well, what we just heard, was that on the agenda? Is that considered on the agenda, the variance for the sign?
Yes.
Yes. And I'd like to be heard.
Okay.
My name is Bruce Wallace, resident for forty years. I live on Laker Boulevard. You know, I have an, I used to attend these maybe annually, these meetings, uh, keep everybody honest, make sure you're representing the residents that live here. Um, and there are other issues coming up here, but I don't like tree service. I don't want to talk about it until I know what council's position is on it, what the issues are and so forth. So on that note, I, I don't understand why the meeting, you know, why we didn't have a chance to, uh, uh, talk or express our opinions before, after you hear the proposed variance, before you made a decision. So that would be one comment. The second comment is, is the city council now prepared to make changes to the code for the signs? Because if you're making them to one building, can't that be applied then to the other building? And don't you think the businesses, other businesses might feel that way? So I, I'm just throwing comments out there. Is this an opportunity, uh, for us to, uh, charge a fee for the variance and make some money? I mean, they already were out of compliance with six variances and you just granted them another one. And there's a reason why these codes were put there in the first place and all the other businesses have seemed to try to adhere to. So I'm just throwing questions out from my perspective to the council when you look at these things. And then the other thing is, is I just, I think you, you risk showing favoritism when you make variances to some building, some businesses that come in and ask for it, when all the other businesses have been trying to comply to your, your code. So I guess really in the meeting, that's all I had to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to be heard for anything that's on the agenda? Hearing none. Uh, take a motion for the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Can we have roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Barksdale?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Um, now we will go into our action request for consideration. First up is a request to approve an agreement with the city of Ferndale regarding use of storage, excuse me, regarding use of southwest storage area.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is a yearly approval by city council. The city of Ferndale has southwest storage area where we are allowed to take our leaves after we collect them. And then from there, Ferndale disposes them with sacrifice for us. So this is just a yearly agreement. For Ferndale, they do charge this little monetary fee for this service. Uh, we're expecting just over two thousand dollars for the year.
Thank you. Who would like to make a motion?
Motion to approve the agreement between the city of Lighter Village and the city of Ferndale regarding the use of the southwest storage area.
Sorry.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
How does the fee compare to last year's? Is it up the same?
It, it's slightly more. Their, their base fee increased very slightly, but their O and M fee has stayed the same for years. So I think if anything, it's up maybe a hundred bucks.
And is it budgeted for?
Any additional questions, discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Barksdale?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is a request to begin the process of enacting Public Act thirty-three of nineteen fifty-one, special assessment for public safety.
Thank you, Mayor. So these next two kind of go hand in hand. So as you guys know, at our last meeting with the finance review committee, uh, give their presentation and recommendation to the city council. At the subsequent study session, uh, we had a little more in-depth conversation of how we wanted to proceed. And there was pretty, pretty much consensus between the council that, uh, you would like to start the process and moving forward and enacting these recommendations. And just to kind of more formalize that for city staff and our city attorney, uh, we would like to have some motions on these tonight. This does not mean these are getting enacted. It does not mean millages are increasing right now. There are still multiple steps for both of these actions. But this just gives us the, for sure, go ahead and move forward.
Thank you. Who would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to begin the process for enacting Public Act thirty-three of nineteen fifty-one, special assessment for public safety.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? So reiterating that this is just getting us, this is just an approval of, to talk about it.
Yes, this is approving staff and our city attorney to essentially start the process. So for example, for this one, the, this public act is going to require multiple public hearings from setting a special assessment district to once we start finalizing the budget order, setting a millage amount. So we still have months before this actually is finally, a dollar value is finally approved. But this just gives staff and our attorney direction that, hey, we're ready to move forward.
Okay.
And then just for clarity, after staff does all that work, we'll have to vote again.
Yes, you, you guys will vote, you guys will vote multiple, multiple more times throughout this process.
There'll be a public hearing, um, to establish the special assessment district and then a public hearing to determine the actual amount, um, of the special assessment.
Okay.
So there'll be opportunity, just pointing out for the public to, for a public input for you to consider on those two occasions.
Anyone else have a preference? Hearing none, roll call.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Barksdale?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have a request to begin the process of placing a headly override on the November twenty twenty-five ballot.
I'll make a motion to begin the process of placing a headly override on the November twenty twenty-five ballot.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Again, this is just to begin the process. This is not voting on, yes, we're going to do this or anything like that.
Correct. There will be multiple more times for a public comment on this from you guys establishing the language to actually determining the, um, millage amount that we're going to place in the ballot.
Okay, thank you. Um, roll call, please.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Barksdale?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Cantor?
Thank you, motion passes. Uh, next is a request to amend zoning ordinance for mobile food vending.
So these next five will kind of go hand in hand. So with a bunch of staff coming on board, we were doing a review of our recent ordinance adoptions and working with our city attorney and our consulting planners. Uh, we reviewed the most recent Planning Commission and Council zoning ordinance amendments. Uh, while going through that process, we realized they weren't updated in the online version. So we were going through, checking all our records to make sure we had everything correct. Uh, however, when we were looking at these five ordinances, we realized we did not have any official records of them being published in a circulating newspaper, which is one of the requirements for ordinances being enacted. So we think it was just slight administrative oversight. We're happy we caught it, but just to be on the safe side, uh, talking with Gables and working with our city attorney, uh, we recommend that council reapprove these ordinances so, um, so everything's clear. And then Austin and our city clerk will work on getting the proper language published in a circulating newspaper as soon as possible.
Leanne, can we do this all in one motion or do we have to do this all separate, five separate ones?
Um, I would think we should do separate. And just to clarify, it is, it's because there's a fifteen day publication requirement, so we need to meet that fifteen days from your official adoption.
And these have already been adopted. They're just.
Correct. They have all been before Planning Commission and City Council before.
Okay.
Alright, I'll make a motion to approve the amendment, amendment to the zoning ordinance for mobile food vending, uh, to amend Article six point one Administrative Site Plan Review to revise section six point one B twelve, mobile food vending, uh, amend Article six Development Procedures to amend the language of section six point one B dot twelve to allow food trucks in the mixed-use district.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Barksdale?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we'll have the request to amend zoning ordinance for EV charging.
Motion to approve the amendment to the zoning ordinance, uh, for EV charging, section two point two. Definitions to add, amend Article four to add a new section and amend section five point thirteen, off-street parking to add a new item.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Barksdale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Cantor?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes. Thank you. Request to amend zoning ordinance for generator location.
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment to the zoning ordinance for generator location, amend Article four to remove section four point twelve permanent power generators, amend Article five site development standards to add permanent power generator to section five point sixteen point two point G and to add the language of section four point twelve to a new section five point sixteen point two point H.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mayor Proton Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Barksdale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Thank you. Request, request to amend zoning ordinance for waste and rubbish.
I'll make.
I'll make a motion to approve the statement, to approve, I'm sorry. I'll make a motion to approve the amendment to the zoning ordinance for waste and rubbish. Amend Article five to, to revise section five point three, waste and rubbish. Amend Article five, site development standards to amend the language of section five point three.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Barksdale?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Cantor?
Yes.
Thank you. Request to amend zoning ordinance for self-service laundromats.
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment to the zoning ordinance for self-service laundromats. Amend Article two definitions, add self-service laundromat as a defined term. Amend Article three zoning districts to add self-service laundromat as a principal permitted use in the mixed-use zoning district. Amend Article four use standards to add a new standard and amend Article five site development standards to add a new off-street parking standard.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
I just wanted to say, can, uh, the city administrator send us an email while all of these have been sent to the, um, circulating news, newspaper?
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Me, uh, Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Barksdale?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, last one is about holiday lights. I'll let you, city manager, introduce that.
Thank you, Mayor. So we briefly talked about this at the study session. So as part of the annual tradition, typically the DDA enhances city hall grounds with festive holiday lighting displays, um, over the, and this has been an agenda item on the DDA's meeting for the past two months. Unfortunately, we can never take a vote on it due to quorum issues. Uh, we are now running a scheduling time, uh, scheduling crunch with our vendors. So we're looking to see if council has any interest in approving the contract with our preferred vendor. And then our next available DDA meeting, we would, uh, put a request on the agenda for them to cover the bill. Uh, and I sent you guys subsequent information late Friday, uh, and Austin can clarify this some more. But we're looking to enter a new contract with Lucent Landscape Lighting in the amount of ten thousand six hundred for the installation of holiday lighting at city hall grounds.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve a contract with Lucent Lighting not to exceed ten thousand six hundred dollars.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
They better be good.
Uh, we did talk during the study session about, again, and, and Mike alluded to it, that the DDA is already budgeted for this work. And, uh, the, anticipate that the DDA would be reimbursing the city for paying the contractor through this contract.
And also that, we did get, what, seven responses?
Yes.
Yeah, and all with detailed diagrams of what they're going to do and what it's going to look like, unlike, uh, the prior, it was the prior year. It was kind of a disaster, so, uh, we shouldn't see a repeat of that this year.
Better be good. Better be reimbursed.
Absolutely.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Barksdale?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Cantor?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes. Thank you. Um, city administrator report.
The only thing I have on behalf of the clerk's office, I just want to remind everyone that we do have nine days of in-person early voting. Uh, both cities, so we have partnered naturally with city of Southfield, we're at the same location. So in-person early voting is at Southfield City Hall, twenty-six thousand Evergreen Road. It starts Saturday, October twenty-sixth, then it runs through Sunday, November third. Hours are eight thirty a.m. through four thirty p.m., except on Thursday, October thirty-first, where they're noon to eight. And then naturally, in-person voting on November fifth will be here in, uh, later in the city hall.
Thank you. City attorney?
I have nothing.
Reports of boards, commissions and committees, the DDA, we didn't have a meeting.
We didn't have a meeting.
Okay. Um, planning commission?
Planning commission also didn't have a meeting, um, so we didn't get a chance to welcome our new board member that was, uh, um, appointed by the city council during our last regular meeting, Dennis Nordmore, but we will have a meeting in November during which we'll get a chance to meet Dennis. Uh, and we will be, I have a note on this. Um, oh, um, based on conversations the council's had in previous study sessions about, uh, considering changing the zoning, uh, for twelve-mile road office district, the planning commission will be discussing that topic as well in our meeting in November.
Thank you. Parks and Rec?
Yes. Uh, the ghostly glow, the ghostly glow dance is going to be this weekend. There will be refreshments and professional DJ. We still have tickets available. Uh, please make sure to check our Facebook page and any Facebook page, uh, related to Lighter Village. I believe we're on all of them. Make posts on all of them. And trivia night is coming back in November. There are still spaces for teams left. Please come out to trivia night. We had a great, I didn't go. I was told it was a great time last year, last, uh, last time we had it. I wanted to go but could not for family reasons and still can't go to this one for the same family reasons, but please come. Uh, our Parks and Rec department does a lot of hard work. Uh, please support them, us.
The tree committee unfortunately had, uh, office hours at the same time. Roger, cool, thank you.
Hey, good evening. Just give you guys sort of a, an update as to what's going on with the tree committee. Um, we just submitted a grant to the DTE. It's a four thousand dollar match grant. And we're real optimistic. We should be able to get that because we had it previously and we sort of didn't capitalize on it and we let it, you know, expire. So we feel real confident that one is going to be in our hands. Probably by, I think it's December they're supposed to be granting it, so we're hoping to hear something at that point. Uh, a lot of time, and another grant that we're working on, it's called the DNR IRA, which stands for Inflation Reduction Act. And this is a grant that we've been working on now for probably about two months, compiling all the information in it, uh, quite in depth. We're pretty much ninety percent there. Uh, we've been working with, you know, city administrator as far as, uh, keeping him, you know, in the loop. And this grant is for about a hundred thousand dollars, so we're optimistic, but not as optimistic as the, the DTE, but still quite optimistic that this one will also come. but not as optimistic as the, the D T E, but still quite optimistic that this one will also come through. And once that comes through, then there's a lot of work involved as far as doing what you say you're gonna be doing, you know, planting and locations and things of that nature, but both these grants, uh, will be a real big boost to our, uh, green space within the city. Thanks.
Are you gonna be here for a moment?
I can be, yeah.
Okay, because, um, we need to talk to Eric about the G I S that, um, Joe brought up.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, Sophos School Board?
Um, well, you guys got a great, uh, update today. Um, I wanted to thank Eric and the school board president, Ashanti Bland, for attending. Um, hopefully, they will be regulars here at our regular meetings, so thank you all for supporting him as well, the high school students, so thank you.
Thank you. Um, any unfinished new business? Public comment, speakers unlimited to three minutes, this is when you can speak whatever is on your mind. Diane, you wanna come up first?
All right.
Thank you.
I came here to speak about Bill Besky, and I hope I have time to, because he is the only person that lived in Lathir Village and died in combat while he still was a Lathir resident. And we had a sign honoring him at a time when we didn't put up signs, but the council took it down recently, hope you didn't trash it, because that was here up until about a year ago. And it's sad, because in this yearbook for Southfield High sixty-seven, you'll find Ted Simmons, who happens to be in the baseball Hall of Fame, but most of you don't remember, our combat veteran who died in Vietnam. And that happened because in those days, Lathir was an upper-middle-class neighborhood, and upper-middle-class people don't go into the military, we go to college, and we go into the professions. And I'm concerned that Lathir's history, not just about Bill, is being lost, but when I saw what the Cernow Group is now planning for Lathir School, I was physically ill. Lathir had three historic buildings, the House in the Woods, the Old Town Hall, and our school, which was our beating heart, our recreation center, our playing fields. We lost the Old Town Hall because Cernow came in when councils wouldn't apply for preservation grants. He totaled it, he told stories that it was in bad shape, happily, my mother did photographs, which we'll have up on social media shortly, you can all see what it really looked like, and he promised, cross my heart and hope, to die, he put up quality buildings. There isn't one building Cernow has put up in this community since he came here that reflects the quality that used to be here before he arrived. I'm concerned, because you can see all the things that we had here, we were not a community of helicopter parents, and I say this as someone who had lived part-time or all-time in Lathir from nineteen fifty-one to two thousand twelve. My parents built the first house after the war here in forty-six, and my mother died fighting for her right to stay here when my brother subjected her to elder abuse, and our house is stolen, which is why I'm not still here. I'm concerned, because instead of wanting this to be a community where we don't have helicopter parenting, I'm concerned that we no longer have the two baseball diamonds, we don't have the big tennis courts that also served as a kickball field. Instead, we're gonna have a car park that holds multiple cars. I'm concerned that in what you're doing, you are creating, emulating Plessy P Ferguson, the old separate but equal doctrine, everybody in Lathir used to have equal quiet enjoyment, but they don't now, they don't because what you've done to Southfield Road, and they're really not going to when the whole area that was once our recreation field that could be ours, when that's turned into a car park. The reality is, it looks to me that we now have a de facto government called the D D A dominated by the Cernow Group. I can't see that this council once, over the last twenty-odd years, has done anything to apply for historic building, uh, grants and so forth, where you could have had it back, it could have been a wonderful, wonderful facility. And when I see what Cernow is looking for now, it makes my stomach churn. I cannot believe that a community so dishonors its history, but then maybe when you took Bill's sign down, the only combat veteran we ever had, maybe that's an indication of how little you respect Lathir's history, and how little you care about creating a recreation center like we used to have, where kids could have an independent childhood, and instead, you want people brought in here on low incomes that'll further lower the demographic and lower your housing values to boot.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak, to be heard? No, I was not actually. Oh my God, no I did not, um, so, no one else wants to be heard?
I would like to. So I've lived here, uh, twenty-two years, and I only recently started paying attention to what's going on in city hall, uh, last fall, last election. Um, one of the things that I've heard a lot is that we've promised transparency between city hall and the residents, and, um, over the last twelve months, there has been many canceled meetings, um, reducing the opportunity for transparency, uh, there are fifteen in total that I've counted. Seven of those were planning commission meetings, that's more than a half year worth, uh, five of those are study sessions, and two of those are D D A meetings, all canceled. Uh, I would like to know, uh, exactly what is the monetary savings that the city is supposedly saving by no longer having the study sessions recorded and put on YouTube at all anymore? Um, from what I can tell, our contract with Lathir Village TV remains unchanged, there is no savings. So that's a, a fallacy unless, um, someone can speak to that. The other thing I'd, I'd like to know very much is, um, for a disclosure of conflicts of interest, I would like to, uh, anyone with a conflict of interest to the cannabis industry to reveal any money that has changed hands, any kind of obligation they might feel that they owe to that industry, and, uh, in, you know, especially to Martin Seema, who is tagged on all the music festival posts, and to Quality Roots, and to Blue Dolphin, um, who, uh, people have been photographed with, um, things of that nature. I feel any responsible person would, would disclose, thank you.
Thank you, is there anyone else that would like to be heard?
Good evening, my name is Lori Coons. The rules for addressing the city council are at the bottom of the agenda page, and they state, no person shall use abusive or threatening language toward any individual when addressing the council. At the nine twenty-three meeting, Ian Ferguson angrily stated his reasons why he thinks cannabis is good for the city. He tried to make you feel sorry for him by saying his wife died and cannabis brought her back to life.
His wife was very much alive.
Well, he said that at the meeting, and he-
He would not lie and say his wife was dead.
Well, he did, I, it's on the tape-
Okay, okay, go ahead.
Okay, yes. And Ian's reason is not valid for needing the cannabis here, because you can get it from delivery for, from a place in Berkeley less than a mile away. And I would like to remind everyone that in two thousand twenty-two, Chief McKee said he was not for cannabis. He said they did not want it, and it would require another police officer at least. Last they heard, we were one down, and we needed, um, and no one had applied. And we'll still need an officer for cannabis if it comes through, and that hundred and eighteen thousand that he says we're gonna get is gonna go right to the salary of a officer. And he, Ian Ferguson called the people that filed the petition disgraceful for suing the city. Well, we filed that complaint in circuit court because Scott Baker, Bruce Cantor, told us to. Watched a video from seven fifteen twenty-four, you can see for yourself. They knew what they were doing, because Bruce Cantor was in the city offices when we went to get a copy of the petitions. He snuck out the back door when he left. The city also tried to hide that the seven fifteen twenty-four city council meeting by changing the date on that video to seven fifteen twenty-three, making it hard to find. They also tried to hide it on the agenda by putting it on its, by its name. Oh, not, I mean, not by its name, only by its code number, and that's pretty shady to me. The video for seven fifteen is proof that city council passed petitions despite being asked to defer their vote. The Michigan election law was read to them, the clerk did not even have the correct number of registered voters. She misspoke and sent an email the next day confirming her error. There were questions of fraudulent signatures that were not addressed. Ian blamed the plaintiff, Autumn Susanis, for wasting the city's money because she hadn't paid her back bill, water bill. He made fun of her for showing up and not being able to breathe. He demanded that Carol Green, another plaintiff on the, uh, on the complaint, be removed from her volunteer job from Parks and Recs. And, uh, how would you like it if I announced that Kelly didn't pay her tax, her sidewalk taxes, and that's put a strain on the city? Talk about wasting money, my tax dollars are paying Scott Baker for his billable hours on cannabis.
Your time is up.
Why would he do that?
Your, your time is up.
Why would Ian Ferguson threaten people's life?
Thank you, thank you, is there anyone, is there anyone else that would like to be heard? Anyone else? Hey, excuse me, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mostly I'm talking, so other people will stop, but my name is Tim. I live on San Quentin Boulevard. Two points, councilperson Jennings, thank you for introducing the young folks from Southfield Public Schools this evening, I'm looking forward to the report from the young woman from the other high school at our next council meeting. Um, I was hoping the young man would stick around to kind of see city council, uh, city government in action. Unfortunately, it looks like they had to leave early, and now I feel fortunate that he did leave early, because, uh, conduct is very important, and unfortunately, it's not always demonstrated at these meetings, and I'd like to remind everybody here that there are young people, often children, and minors watching, and they're paying attention to the way we behave. I don't mean to make any, uh, unfound allegations, but I would venture to guess I'm among the youngest people in this room. And unfortunately, when I watch or attend these city council meetings, I often feel like one of the oldest or most mature. So I would encourage my fellow residents to prioritize conduct even when emotions are high, because it's important, and young people are watching. I would also like to say, I was at the last city council meeting, and it goes without saying, uh, but I'll say it anyway, that not everybody here was at that meeting, and Ian Ferguson's wife was present at that meeting, and she was introduced at that meeting.
Let him finish this, his time, thank you, appreciate it. Thank you. Sorry, I'm so sorry.
So yes, uh, thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to be heard? Anyone?
Ian Ferguson, Lathir Village, mayor and council, good evening. To the citizens of Lathir Village, it is now your time to vote for proposition one and two. I ask you to vote yes on proposition one and two, because I want Lathir Village to realize their full one hundred and eighteen thousand dollars annually. I ask you to do that, because we have no income revenue, absolutely none, coming in in the next three to five years. I'm asking you to do that and help the city. If you cannot help the city because you're busy, or you don't have time to volunteer, this is the best way to do it. For those of you who have turned in your ballots early, thank you for voting for prop one and two. For you who will show up at the poll, I ask you to think of your city and vote in a positive manner for proposition one and two. Let's just dispel all of the, um, the, uh, the rumors and the, the bad information that's out there. Vehicle traffic, no issue at all in Berkeley, Southfield, Hazel Park, Royal Oak, Wald Lake, even Sagatuck. There's absolutely no vehicle issues, no police issues. In fact, um, you can contact Matt Cohen, who is the Berkeley Chief of Police, at two four eight six five eight three three eight zero. Ask him any questions you wish to ask him, he will gladly answer those. Property values, those cities I just mentioned, they actually had a two to three percent increase in property values after cannabis showed up in their cities. Business district value, the value of our business district actually will increase when we tear down older buildings to renovate and bring in cannabis businesses. That is a fact, there are buildings on the Southfield corridor right now that cannot be renovated. No one will move into them because of all of the infrastructure issues, all of the water main issues, they will not tear those down. Only cannabis can do that, and I'm willing to write a three thousand dollar check right now if anybody in this audience can bring a business model to this city and give it to Mike Green, and I promise you, I'll write that check, and we will dispense with this cannabis ordinance, once and for all. It has to be approved by Mike and this council, I will personally write you that check. And I have no dealings with cannabis whatsoever, except for what I had discussed with you guys on the twenty-third of September. Realizing a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars for this city is what I am here for, that's it, I'm just trying to help my city. Microdosing, a lot of people don't talk about microdosing. Uh, five years ago, when cannabis started, it was eighty to twenty, eighty percent smokable, twenty percent medicinal. Now it's fifty fifty, why? Because the demographic is age sixty-two to sixty-seven white males living in the suburbs. Now they're managing their illnesses such as, uh, shoulder injuries, such as, uh, injuries on the knee, such as, you name it.
Your time is up, Ian.
So I thank you, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to be heard? Anyone else? Okay. Uh, mayor and council comments?
I wanted to go real quick, is that okay?
Go ahead. You need to have your microphone back on.
Uh, a lot of stuff has been said, and something that Tim said really struck a chord with me, and I apologize, but I will have to leave after my statements, because I need to go home to my family and young children. But when he said, children watch these videos, um, my daughter watches, she's three. She watches every, sorry, as much as she can, she watches every one of my meetings. And I know we talk about a lot of complex issues and topics, and I know I say every time, I just want us to act like adults. And a lot of people are, sometimes don't do the best job keeping their cool, but at the very least, I try to, for my three-year-old daughter that's watching. I know we're talking about very controversial things and topics, I just, again, want us to be able to, to converse and have disagreements and conversations with each other, like adults, so that for the children that are watching, they have a little bit better of an example to what discourse can and should be like. Thank you, and again, I apologize for having to leave.
Wait, uh, wait, don't leave before we adjourn the meeting. Can't, you can't leave before we adjourn the meeting, please.
We'll try to be quick. Uh, I had one comment, I just wanted to thank the tree committee members, uh, for the work that they've been doing. I had a conversation with Roger before the tree committee was established about, how can we get funding into the city to help with rehabilitating and replacing trees that have gotten diseased and dying? And I was like, well, we need to get grant money, but we don't have resources to get grant money. Well, now we have a tree committee that's making applications to get grant money, so just, I'm very impressed with the work the tree committee has done, and really appreciative of the efforts that they're putting in to try and augment the resources of the city in order to try to do- to try and augment the resources of the city in order to try to do the work that's important to the members of that committee and so many other residents in the city.
Thank you. One thing I wanted to ask about what Diane brought up was about this plaque. One, I didn't know anything, and I'm sure most of the council people did not know, just me, it's just me, thank you, that we didn't know anything about it, and so if it's down, we can look into it, and if it's down for some reason that does not satisfy reach of the council, it'll be put back up, so please give us a moment to be able, or give us some time to find out what happened to the plaque before accusing us of doing something that none of us really knew what was going on. So Mike, if you can look in to see what happened to the plaque, we'd appreciate it, and if you could let us know for our next meeting, that would be appreciated. Diane, that's all I got.
Thank you, Senator.
You're welcome.
Yeah, so I just wanted to respond to Mr. Wallace from earlier, just a few things. So variances were never granted for that existing monument sign. It's what's known as legally nonconforming, so when the laws change, so when the laws change, we don't make the, remove their sign. They're legally nonconforming, they can keep it. So there was no issue where, you know-
You're saying I go grandfathered in?
Grandfathered in, exactly. So it's legally nonconforming. So similar to other things, like, you know, we had a, some, a business put up a sign with multiple colors and baccalaureate, and so we changed the sign ordinance, but we can't go back and tell that person to remove his sign unless he can keep it up there until he goes to make a change, and then he's required to come in to conform it. So that's what kind of took place here a little bit. Also, there is a fee charged, so we are collecting fees to cover the cost of having Giffords-Levster do their analysis and present it back to us. And then, as I think Jason said, I can't remember if it was during the study session, or if it was during the actual meeting tonight, part of the process is receiving variance requests, and then we have laws that we have to adjudicate to whether or not to approve them. If we start to see multiple requests for the same thing, that's when we go back and we look at changing the ordinance. And so some examples of that were, well, the sign ordinance, well, actually, that wasn't an example. That's a nonconforming. An example that is sheds. So we were getting a lot of requests for sheds to be ten feet instead of eight feet, so we went back and we looked at our ordinance, and we realized that our ordinance was really not in compliance with the law. Not aligned with what other cities were doing, so we changed the ordinance to ten feet. So it is the process working. If we start to get more requests similar to what we received tonight, now we have to look at changing the ordinance. And then, the only other thing I'm gonna say, I'm not gonna go through Ms. Kuntz's conspiracies and misinformation, but the only thing that I'll say is, if you watch the tape, again, more misinformation review, I asked the city attorney a question about if that would have to go to Circuit Court. I did not tell Ms. Miller that she had to go to Circuit Court, did not tell anybody to go to Circuit Court. So again, it's just misinformation, and I'm not gonna address the rest of the things that you said.
Ms. Kuntz, thank you. Go ahead, finish with your stuff.
I'm done, that's it.
Okay.
Really quickly, so as you know, Michigan First Credit Union is headquartered here, so I have asked them to do more in the city, since they are headquartered here. So instead of just turning on their lights this year, they will be doing what's called Festival of Lights. It will be on Monday, November twenty-fifth, which happens to be a regular meeting, but it will be from five-thirty p.m. to eight p.m. So doors open at five-thirty p.m. They will be doing like a countdown of lighting the, lighting the building. So there will be crafts, ornament-making, face painting, light refreshments, pictures with Santa, and much more. If you want to purchase a picture, it will be five dollars, and that, those, the dollars will go to, oh, wait, wait, wait. Or you can bring a nonperishable food item unwrapped, a toy, or a toy unwrapped. Donations will be used to support a local charity and a organization. So just wanted to share that with you all, that there will be, you know, instead of them just turning on the lights, they're trying to make it a community event.
Thank you. Is there anything else? Hearing none, I take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Adjourn. Have a good night, everyone.